Select Board Standing Rules and Meeting Agenda Policy. Pro the Minutes, Warrants, Mail, Public Comment. Under Old Business, we have Legal, Animal Control. And I wanted to remind people about the Town Plan Hearing this Wednesday at 6:30 at the school, elementary school. And then, just a short discussion on the New Business to do with a letter for the state for Route 7, and Open Positions.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we need a motion for your chairman.
I make a motion for Nelson.
Second.
Any discussion, anyone else interested? Okay, I'll call the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, again. Vice Chairman.
I make a motion for Jason.
Get a second for that, Jason was our vice chair last time. No. Yeah, I'll second that. Anybody else interested, discussions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Boyd Clerk?
I make a motion, Johnny.
Can I second?
These new people would be clerks.
Can I second myself?
I was gonna do Bob. I think Jenny's-
You wanna be clerk?
Yeah.
Sure, I nominate Ron.
Okay, so we got two people nominated, we got, well, I gotta get a second for you-
Can I second myself?
You can second yourself, that means you're gonna-
I second myself.
Okay, and Ronnie, you'll second yourself, I assume?
I shall have to, I guess.
Okay. All, all those in favor of Jenny say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Ron say aye.
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 Okay, so it leaves me with breaking, breaking this here. Well, Ronnie, I guess I'm gonna vote with you this time, so watch out. You're the clerk.
Congratulations.
Regular meetings, our regular meetings have always been the first, second, and third Thursday of the month, with the fourth being for the wastewater treatment facility. I'll take a motion that we remain with the same this time, if the board's in agreement.
I'll second.
Need a motion.
I make a motion.
Second. Okay.
I thought yours was the motion. I'll, I'll-
We'll figure it out, we'll figure it out.
Let's discuss it, because one of the things that I've done in the past, and it, and I know it was suggested again this time by our administrative assistant, is that we limit our board meetings to fewer in the month, to regular meetings, and then the wastewater meeting. I, I've been trying to do that before also, but usually I do that when I have board members that have been here for quite a while and know the system. What I would rather suggest is that we move with this, and then take this up again in the summer, and then in the summer we might do fewer meetings, simply because less goes on in the summer that we have to deal with in emergency situations and stuff.
I don't think the new people will catch on quick though, so.
I would appreciate coming regularly, because there's a lot to learn, so, I would, I would agree with that.
It's just that, you know, you're talking March eight-
I would love to go with fewer later, but-
You're talking three months of regular meetings, and then we'll take it up again, if people's in agreement with that.
That sounds good.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I can.
Three months, we'll take it up again.
In June.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I think that's the time to take it up, because then we're in the summer time. Okay, any further discussion?
And then we can meet, like, once a year, in the summer.
And actually, in the wastewater meetings, there's a lot of months we don't meet. If there's nothing to be discussed, we will-
So if we don't-
It should be, it should be fair and upfront, is that even if we schedule regular meetings every week, it doesn't mean that that occurs if we don't have anything for an agenda, what I'll do is cancel that meeting. And we've done that in the past, so it's not that the, I'd rather schedule the regular meeting, because what it does, it lets people know, I'll tell them we regularly meet, and if they wanna get on the agenda, they know when, they can ask and so forth, and we'll put them on the agenda through those regular meetings, and get things discussed, where if you have every other, you're not giving the people the time that we've given them by doing our regular meetings, and we've been doing for years the same way. But again, I think we can discuss it more come June, 'cause I think in the summer, there's been several times in the summer when we've done that for three months, we turn around and only do two meetings in those months. So, I think we need to discuss it then, because during that time, what happens is I'm canceling, and then all of a sudden somebody shows up for a meeting, it's not there. So let's, let's try to figure out how we deal with it.
For the wastewater meetings, if it doesn't happen, we don't have a meeting here, it just, it just doesn't-
Well, it's all, the meeting's always at the waste facility if we have them.
But if it's, if it's not happening?
And if it's not happening, we'll let you know, we, we post a schedule that cancels the meeting.
Okay.
The other thing that happens too, is when we go to the wastewater plant, we, we go there as a Board of Sewer Commissioners.
Yeah, we're not-
We don't talk, we can't talk about it.
We don't talk about other stuff.
So you only talk, okay.
Strictly to sewer.
Got it.
Okay.
And that starts at six, when we go there.
Right.
These are always-
Okay, any other discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that means we're going with the regular meeting to start, first, second, and third, it's a regular meeting here, and the fourth will be the wastewater. Okay, Paper Record. We've used the banner in the past.
It's the only paper we got.
Transcript's gone now, right?
That's right. I'd go with somebody else, but that's the only one we got around here.
So is that a motion for the banner?
That's a motion for the banner.
Question though, can it be electronic? I mean, why not Vermont Digger, or?
Well, the catch is-
I'm just asking.
Some people, you know, like myself, I'm not electronic crazy guy, and there's, I know a lot of people around my age that really don't get into that, but they do pick up the paper.
Does that make sense?
Even if somebody else is ready, or they go to Stuart's and read it for nothing.
Did I have a, did I have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we, Jason, yeah, further discussion? Now everybody knows, go to Stuart's and read this for free. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we need authorization to sign the warrants. Normally, the authorization is given to the chair and the vice chair to sign warrants when there is no meeting. It's up to you guys on how you wanna deal with that.
I have no issue with that.
Oh, we need a motion.
I don't have an issue.
I motion to accept the two of you signing the warrants if we are unable to sign them.
Okay, one or the other, based on who's available.
Right, oh, okay, so, yes, that's the motion I make.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, Select Board Standard Rules. I'm gonna read what the standard rules are that are posted here in the town, and then we can discuss if we wish to move on them. Number one, meetings will run in an orderly and professional manner. Control will be kept at all times, those found out of order will be removed. Two, the agenda will be presented in the following manner and voted on by the Board. Name of the item, individual wishing to speak on the item will be listed, items not having a speaker will be so noted, items may be tabled or removed from the agenda, some items may be scheduled for another meeting. Number three, Board may limit meeting length by majority vote of the Board, this may be amended as needed by the majority of the Board. Four, each member of the Board and members of the public recognized by the Board may speak on the same issue for no more than once a meeting for a length of three minutes unless approved by the majority of the Board. Okay, and that this may be amended as needed by the majority of the Board. A member of the public which harasses others or disrupts the meeting will be warned and removed if their activities continue. Okay, and get a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Number four-
I want people out there to realize, if they have a real issue, that they can come here any Thursday there is, and they'll be heard.
And they might-
That's how, that's what we had before, I propose that again, if that wasn't stated out.
Well, that's why-
If somebody has water running on their property, or they got, they got an issue, they wanna come in and vent, I'm all for them coming in and saying the problem. We might not be able to do anything. It's the same with any of these agenda items. Some of them, we're not able to handle them, just because it's on the agenda that night. They may move on, we may have to think about it, go look at it, whatever has to happen. But what, I feel, any, any person who feels aggrieved somehow or another, they ought to be able to come in on a, on a Thursday and not elaborate, like I am right now, just tell us what's wrong, and we'll, we'll address it.
I'm timing you, because I said each member of the Board can only have three minutes.
I agree with Ron.
I agree with Ron. I think number four, actually, by what you just said, and members of the public recognized by the Board may speak on the same issue for no more than once a meeting for a length of three minutes, probably should be stricken.
I would think so. I mean, I, I've been here as a private citizen, and I, I know I violated the heck out of that, so, and you guys let me talk, so I, I guess that's-
Well, or, or it could be, well, basically, you're covering it up above, where you talk about meetings will be controlled, kept at all towns, found in order to be removed, it would be up to the Chair at that point, if somebody is repeating himself all the time to say, "You're repeating yourself, and at this time, we're gonna move on, or, or we'll close the discussion." I think that's more appropriate than trying to say to somebody, "You got three minutes", first, who's gonna hold the timer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come on.
And it's a disincentive to come, we should, we should be welcoming, welcoming, we want people involved, so, yeah.
So am I, so am I getting a motion for someone to remove number four?
I made that motion.
As an amended to the motion, okay. And I got a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of the mo, the amended the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. Standing Room. Meeting Agenda Policy. Citizens wishing to be on the selectman's agenda for the Tuesday night meeting, need to call the selectman's office and leave a message for the Board Administrator Assistant by 12 noon on Tuesday. Please leave your name and state the business you wish to discuss with the Board. By doing this, you will allow the administrative assistant time to post the item on the meeting notice, so if others may want to talk about the item, they will be aware of it on the posted agenda. The Board knowing this may not always be possible due to the nature of the items that come before the Board, so please note, you may still arrive the night of the meeting with an item, and the Board will decide if they can add the issue to the agenda for that night, or schedule it for another meeting. If you look at our agenda tonight, we have something called Public Comment, which, if people can't get in and get their scheduled item on the agenda, by following these rules that I just read, basically, they would be able to come in and during public comment, be able to speak. And as Ron said earlier, if it was something that we have to review or look up, we will then say that it's tabled until the next meeting, but to not allow someone to not speak about something, I think is the wrong thing. And every, every agenda should have a public comment period on it, is where I'm at, too.
So can we change the agenda for Thursday night, need to call, to change it to are requested to if possible, or suggested that they call, and can we also add that they can email it?
Yeah.
Or does it have to be an actual pick up the phone and call?
Well, somehow what we need to note on here, and maybe it needs to be word differently is, we need to note that if you call and get put on the agenda by email or voice, you will be an agenda item which the Board will be prepared to discuss in most cases. Okay?
And also, other people will, you can get that agenda, it's posted out here, anybody who's in the office, they can see that agenda, and if they, they have some feelings about it, they show up for that meeting.
Of course.
But somebody has to request it, in order for us to get prepared too, that's what he's trying to say, he limited, I don't know what's going on.
I get that, but he's also saying that you can come in and bring a, bring something on the night of, so it's, it's a, we suggest that you try to, or, as opposed to must.
The role, the rules for meetings have changed in the state. You must post what you're gonna, especially if it's an important item, you must post it on the agenda and be able to willing to discuss it, so the public knows. The public has to know what you're talking about. You can't come in as a Board member, say, "Hey, I've got a special item, let's do it."
No, 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 correct.
Basically, I think that, that's the wording we wanna put on here, we want them to give us anything that they feel important, and we can discuss it, and have it on our agenda, and the public will know, but that, at the same time, we will accept public comment at the meetings, but be aware that those items may not be discussed to the detail they want.
Right.
I'm just thinking about the wording of that second one.
It's cloudy, it's definitely cloudy.
And it ought to be more welcoming to anybody coming in, something like, "The Board will make every effort to get you on the agenda," or something along those lines. Make it clear that if you're not on the agenda and you followed the, the noon, that it was an exception circumstance.
I agree.
Yeah.
Of course, I'm not very good at wordings.
So let, let's do this.
I think we're saying the same thing.
Instead of moving on this item, we'll withdraw it and table it until the next meeting, so that the wording can be changed.
Yeah.
And then present something to us, and we'll all send you something, Linda, about what we think about this. A sample of what we think it might, should be, and then at that point, it will be better to discuss and see what it is. Because right now, I've heard three different ways to go with this, and I don't know how many you've heard, Linda, but I've heard at least three.
I've heard two.
So, so I think what we need to do is, is to sort of write that out, and Linda, if you want to, go ahead and write it and send it to us, and we'll edit what we can and send back to you even. Okay, but then at that point, we then can move on it, we can do it at the next meeting. Otherwise, I think we're gonna make a motion on something here that we're not sure what we're doing. Okay? Board in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ronnie, you in agreement with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
So I have a question after the meeting, Agenda Policy. Do we have to talk about where we post our warnings? Isn't that part of this? Like our, our normal places, our Village Market, Winchester's?
Town Office.
And the Town Office.
Town website.
And the Town Website.
Yeah.
Just so people are aware that-
Yep.
That's where it's posted also.
Okay. And actually, that's probably should be part of what the, this revised thing, we should have a line on the bottom that says that will be posted at these three places, so you can find it. Then that way there, the policy is made, it's made as clear where you're gonna do it. Thank you.
I guess, I, I think we could be more clear about all of the places that we do, and we shouldn't be haphazard about the posting.
No.
So if we decide to use Front Porch Forum, for example, as a place to post, then everything should be posted there. It shouldn't be, some of the meetings are there, and then it sets the expectation, and then the next one's not there. So I, I think we need to be pretty, pretty exact about where it should be, and maybe on the, and list it out on the front page of our townoponal.org.
Yeah, it definitely needs to be on our webpage. I, I think that's, that's a definite-
It's the spot where it should be.
And I'm, I'm thinking the, the, on the front, as soon as you go to Town Oponal, don't have to dig for it.
Yeah, I think the local stores, Town Office, and our website. When you start getting into some of the other items, everybody doesn't read everybody's Facebook, everybody doesn't read Front Porch Forum, but we, as a town, we have a website, and the people have been after us to do that for a long time. Here's where you're gonna find our information, and here's where it is, and if we're not putting something there that you think should be there, then tell us, that's, so we can work on it.
And, but my point, my other point there, or the other side of that, is that it has to be consistent. It's probably better not to have anything on Front Porch Forum as a warn, unless we're going to be consistent, and it's always there, 'cause some people do get their information.
Yeah.
So it, it needs to be consistent, and it needs to be this and only this. And then if we decide to add something to it, then everything goes there as well.
I, I agree with you. The town will do it in a consistent manner where it is, it doesn't mean that somebody won't copy our agenda from somewhere and put it on Front Porch Forum.
Well, that, that's true.
That's, that's somebody else to man, we're not gonna be policemen of what's on Front Porch Forum.
No, 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 and I'm not suggesting that. It's as, as we post, and, and that would mean, I would think, anybody on the Select Board wouldn't do that, and anybody on the Planning Commission wouldn't do that. Let's let the officials, let the town, let the official warning process take place, and then if somebody, a private citizen, wants to put it on there, that's, that's out of our control.
Be aware that we're talking about where the selectmen will post, and where the selectmen post their items. Now, we appoint both the Planning Board and the DRB, but at this point, I'm not aware of us ever telling them where to post or not post. We've sort of let them know where, where we, as a town, post, and I think that's where they post it currently, is the same place.
Municipal government should use your own website and your places that you've determined every year that is required under statute, where you post.
And I think that, well, I think, again, this whole meeting law, I think, requires that.
Yes.
So.
That's why you're setting where you're posting tonight.
Yeah.
And, have I passed my three minutes?
Yes, if you're okay. Well, the Board will prove you're going a little far.
So I think the, the, so the townoponal.org ought to, ought to list, and it ought to be a bulleted list that's always there, every time you go, all meetings will be posted to these sites, and it, rather than digging for it, or looking for it, or having to expand this, it just ought to be, here's where we post.
Yeah, I think, I think, if I remember correctly, something across the top, or you can go down and get meetings and do the things, so. Okay? Enough on that, guys?
Mm-hmm.
Moving on, Approval of the Minutes of 3/1/18.
So moved.
Second it.
Abstain.
I haven't called a vote yet. The reason why I'm doing that is, 'cause I wanna make sure I was here. 'Cause if I wasn't, then you couldn't do it, because there wouldn't be three people here, and it's not uncommon for when the Board reorganizes in some town, not to have enough people to approve the minutes of before, but we can here. So I got a motion to approve. Second?
I, I made the motion, Jason seconded it.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You just gotta abstain.
Now I say abstain?
Yes.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Aye, so we carry it. All right, guys. Warrants.
Now we'll get into this.
Okay, Payroll, ending 3/9/18, in the amount of $9,071.91. No surprises there. Cost Payable, ending 3/9/2018, in the amount of $12,605.22. The large items were $3,800 plus for Morton Salt. IRS got $2,900, those were the two big ones, if you look at them, they're almost $7,000 of it. Salt, of course, is what's keeping your roads, like top roads anyways. All those in favor of the warrants and the-
I'd like to make a motion to approve the warrants.
Okay, get a second.
I agree.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Moving on to mail. We have Vermont Agent Transportation Department, a motor vehicle uniform municipal access weight permit. This is for Vermont Renewable Fuels. Retription of five. CIO Renew, required date 2/3/18. Our road foreman has put all the standard limits that they do on all of them, and he has signed off on this. What's your pleasure?
Motion to sign.
I second.
Any further discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
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 We have another one from Tam, and basically, he has a list of vehicles also on this, everything's attached, it should be, road foreman has done the same with this as he did with the other ones, and has signed off. What's your pleasure?
Motion to sign.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our Lister has requested to take a course to do with Real Estate Property Appraisal Workshop, Level One. Uh, let's see, the cost is $689. As we did the, a while back, yes, we requested that all people taking training in the building would first come to the Select Board and ask for those expenditures, that's why you see this in front of you. As you all know, this is a new Lister, and she's been taking some training and working with the past Lister who's been helping out, which we're very pleased to have had occur. What's your pleasure, would you like her to go learn a little more about listing?
Is that what you would call a, a starting up course, or is that a course where you've gotta be a Lister and have some experience in order to continue on? Is that an assessor course? Or is it just a, 'cause some of them courses, I'm under the understanding is, you've gotta be a Lister for a while before you can sign up, the higher up ones, the assessor ones. Maybe I was misled, but I'd like to know that question before I say, "Yeah, it's all right to go ahead and know."
I wanted to let you know that I have signed up for Vermont's Free Lister Training Course. However, I have been researching training in, in order to become certified Lister. Vermont sets out certain guidelines. Level One is complete as appraisal workshop, and take a step, state sponsored training, see attached. So this is the Level One that she starts here.
Yeah, okay, that's what I asked.
That's a good question.
That's what I asked.
I think you're supposed to go to the Lister Training first, it's at the end of the month, and then they instruct them how to move further.
Yeah, it's okay. What's your-
Make a motion, make a motion to approve it.
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Yes.
Any training that our people want to take?
Level One.
Could we have her write something back to us after she takes a course like that, whether it was a good course or a bad course?
Which one?
The ones that she's taking. The advantage of it is, is that we know they take these courses, and we're gonna be more people coming and taking courses to if we get more Listers. I'd just like to know if they're beneficial or not. You know, sometimes I've gone to some of these courses in the state, and it's not quite-
Those ones are mandatory. You need to learn all the rules and regs for being a Lister, they're mandatory.
I'm not saying they're not, I just want to know whether she felt the course was, you know, if you go to some courses, they'll give you a form at the end of it that says, "Fill out what you thought of this course." I wanna know what she thought of the course, so, I don't know if the rest of the Board cares, but I just-
I think it's fair for paying for, the town's paying for the course, it would be nice to have some feedback on the course.
Yeah.
But this is a course that you would take right in the beginning, not a course where you're, if you've been here-
Oh, yeah, this ain't the third or-
'Cause we've had Listers that are here, you know, well, three, four, or five years, and they never went to any courses, you know, they did later on, and, and I was just, but some of them, you had to have some time, it's just like an, like an apprentice job. Sometimes you got apprenticed for a while before you can go and, and get the, go to the next level. That's all I was wondering, and if that's, if that's what it is, is, you said Level One, if that's how it works out, fine, just, I got nothing against having a person go. And if that's, if that's what it is, if you said Level One, if that's how it works out, fine, just, I got nothing against having a person go. And I think that is a good question that you asked, that we could ask, but I mean, some people like school, some people don't like school, so you don't know whether you're gonna get a true answer there either.
No, but, but at least there we know we're spending money in-
That's right.
That's in the right direction to get this person on board and, and able to do things better.
And if it's, and like, like Linda just said there, if these are mandatory things, they gotta go to them anyway.
Can I ask, is this a new mandatory thing, or is this a, has it always been-
If you wanna be certified, there's mandatory courses yet.
No, I understand, but how long has that been a regulation? How long has it, you know what I'm asking, five years ago did you need to do that to be a Lister?
Well, probably five years ago.
When people come in and they don't, they've never been a Lister before, there's a, there's a whole manual, just like a, a Select Board manual.
Okay, so it's been around for a while.
And you go through and, and you learn how to be one.
A lot of-
That makes sense.
A lot of things have changed over the last thirty years in the requirements and regulations for people sitting in these positions.
And see, we all always have been kinda fortunate, because we've always had a Lister that's been there a long time. Even if they didn't know everything, they knew enough to get a new Lister going and get them started and get them working.
Yep.
That was, that's the point, I think, that, you know, now we don't have anybody, that's why I was asking that question, we don't have anybody.
It's like a lot of our positions.
I mean, I just, the last Lister is trying to huff around some, but it can only be hit and miss, it isn't like, you know-
It ain't a daily thing.
You're actually with somebody, you know, for extended period of time.
Yeah, but we had, a lot of positions in our town are that way, where people come in that have very little knowledge about those positions, and then they, they, they pull up the bootstraps and do it. Our, our health officer wasn't aware of what the state rules are until we made him a health officer twenty, thirty years ago. Same goes with the zoning administrator and the rest of them, but, the catch is, is that there is a lot of courses out there that you can go to and be trained, and we as a board need to support that training, is where I'm at. But I also, as I said earlier, I wanna know if the training's any good, because if it isn't, then we as a board can make some comment back to the people that are doing that, because we're paying for it.
Well, see, at one time, I had to take that health officer job for a little while, because there's a book that's thick. I said, what do you, who do you think, I took the Evelyn Woody Speed Reading for crying out loud, and know all them things, and I did browse through it and stuff, but I, I was so happy when Jim got back on board.
You'll betcha.
I don't need that town health officer sticker on my chest.
No, you want, you want to-
But I mean, there is some, like the, the book right there, that tells you a lot, that selectmen thing, and they have courses for this kinda stuff too. You know, take a select reading course or whatever, some of these courses.
Just drive slow, right?
That's it, can't be caught speeding like somebody else.
Okay, moving on in the mail. Huzick River Hydro LLC has asked it for a ninety day extension to file Operation and Flow Management Plan. He has several letters here that have supported that effort, and they've asked him to send those letters on, and I, who's the person that asked for it? Watershed Management Division wanted copies of order, and I know he's got them all here, so, I think he'll move forward with this thing. Actually, he's been pretty good to work with. Okay, public comments, we have any public comments tonight?
I actually was just, you guys were talking about the Lister positions and different things, and-
Would you announce who you are?
I'm Donna, my name's Donna Lozan, I live in Pownell, and when I was looking at the town report, I did see a lot of empty positions. And I guess my question to the board would be, how would the average person find out, like, what a Lister is and what they do? Or had somebody say to me, you know, what's a fence viewer? Do they just drive around, look at fences all day? Like, what is the actual position? And I think, at least in some, with some of the folks that I've talked to, is that they really have no idea what some of these positions entail, how much time they're looking at, some people are interested-
So what their responsibilities are.
But they don't know enough about what, what it is.
Yeah, and some of them have certain responsibility of, under state statutes, so if they were to look up a town auditor, under the state statutes and stuff, with those positions, they would learn what those sort of things were. Listers also have state requirements, so, so I think the best place is probably to look under statutes for some of those, offense viewers are no longer, they've done away with fence viewers, even though it's still listed. There used to be a time when the fence viewer actually went out and viewed a fence line and decided whether it was in the correct place or not, or, when there was land disputes, we don't do that anymore.
Years ago, if you boarded a farmer, and if your land boarded a farmer, it used to be, you maintained half of it.
That's right.
The farmer maintained the other half, say it was a hundred yards of it, well, you'd have to maintain fifty yards, that's what it used to be, see, I don't know what it is now, and that, and also, they had that position, and we had guys that were fence viewers, and they would go and look and make sure, because sometimes, people, they put a new fence up, they kinda move it a little bit.
They did a little creek.
So they had to, that's, that's what that was, and as far as the Listers go-
Me and Henry.
To encapsulate that a little bit, you may have cards in here, and all the properties are listed on them cards, and acreage is there, square footage of the home, picture of the home, things like that, that's all part of it, that is, but the state has a lot of requirements that I know nothing about. But that is, and the Listers go around every year, and they gotta be done by what, April first?
April first, when they start.
When they start, when they gotta be done.
Usually, usually by August, we're, we're, we're done, and that's what I go with, somewhere in August, because you want it done before we just-
That's right, April first, if you, you know, if you were building, you were gonna build something, and you said, well, I might as well wait till after, wait till first, then I'll get things done.
Grand list is lodged in June.
Yeah, that's how that, that works out, but they go around, and they, they got their pictures, but they look at all the properties, some of them, the people will let you in and this and that, it's, it's just, also, it's a, it's a diplomatic job, you can't, you know, people are like, you ain't coming in here, or whatever. And the people will dispute acreage, they'll dispute these other things, and the state has some guidelines that you gotta have and times that this stuff has to be done by. See, this has to, this grand list thing has to be in by when? June?
Yeah, she's saying June, I know there was times when we gave extensions, but I think they only gave until August, and that was the cutoff.
And that, and that shouldn't happen, I mean, that's why we'd like to get, well, at least a couple Listers here, three would be ideal, because then if you got three, well, then, none of them have to work that many hours, you, you ain't all gotta be, you know, going around like the Three Stooges, you could, you know, you go by yourself and go look at a property, or whatever. You know, you get signed to someone, like, we had an elderly lady there, she didn't know nothing about computers, but she knew a lot about other things, she'd been a Lister forever. And that, that worked out fine, she knew what had to be done, but she didn't, you know, wasn't, she was like me on a computer, you know, it takes a long time for me to get anything done. But if you get three people, if they wanna work together, and all we're trying to do is get an honest evaluation of these properties, because that's, that's what, because then you have grievances, people are gonna come in, you're gonna have to defend your grievance. And that's why you should know these, these rules and regulations, and they got prices for everything, I mean, if you look up, it's a slate roof, that's a ten or whatever, that's supposedly the best roof, even if it's falling off, it's still the best roof. And that's how they, they list this stuff, flooring, you know, siding, whatever, but you learn all that stuff as you go along, I don't, I don't think a person has to know, and a lot of these things don't change. You've got seventeen hundred properties.
But if people are interested in these positions, and they really wanna learn more about what it entails and what the time commitment is, then maybe they should come here, what would you recommend that, that they do, if, if they look at the book and say, wow, I really wanna be a part of the community?
Well, couldn't we, if you say it's, there's a website, if there are websites that you can go to, can't we make the, our website user friendly, so that they can go to our website, and we can do a link to the website, and then they can go right to-
Well, I've just been showing this to the Secretary of State, lists those positions, local offices, and, and gives a small description of what each is, and actually talks to you, talks to you about what, what section of the, the law, the statute it's under, so you can look up, it actually looks like they got links there to do that. So, when you look at these, you'll, you'll be able to do that, again, that's underneath the Secretary of State webpage, and what it basically was, was local office descriptions, under there was the link.
So is, but is there anything on the Pownell website, or if somebody were to come in and they looked at that book?
Not at this time, but we might be able to put this on there.
Okay, I'm just thinking that, you know, I got the-
It's a good idea, I think, because we also have auditor positions that are available too.
There's quite a few positions that are empty at the moment.
It's easy enough to add links.
Get the links off from, from that site, and make them live links on the, on the town website.
Because I think that spot that says open positions, right?
That, you just click on the word Lister, and it takes you to that site, you don't have to go, go from, from the town page to the state page and-
And dig around for it, yeah.
Yeah, and, and basically, what, what the state page has is a list of, of local officials, and then under that, it's, it's a, a long list of what they are, and what sections they go to in the law, and, and-
The other one is, uh, links to cities and towns, has a section there also on all these positions.
I also have a printed book here that discusses.
Yeah, there, there's different ones that you can look up that, that, again, but there, there is a, a large number of these. We also have positions this year on the Planning Board and the DRB that are open, there, there's, there's a number of positions that people might wanna serve on, and apply for, and then this board will pick from those people that are interested in that, and appoint them to those positions. It'd be nice if we were able to pick, and we had several people apply for each one, but usually, we're lucky if we can get one person to come in here, so.
And I think you might get more activity if people just know a little bit more about what the, what, what do you do on the DRB, and what is that time commitment? Just a suggestion.
Well, some of them boards are, they don't pay nothing, and they got, it is like, the Listers, that's an elected job, we'll appoint somebody, if we can't get, if nobody runs, if somebody's interested, that's how a Lister we have right now, she was appointed, and then, well, she was elected too, but she was, nobody else run against her, whatever, we have three of them usually. But then, that job, and that, and that job does pay, it's an hourly job, pays by the hour, there's some compensation, but some of these other ones, you know, everyone has, is getting more and more government influenced. The state, you know, and the VCRC with that Planning Board and everything else, everybody, so, I would like a nice cross-section on them boards.
Yes, yeah.
You know, because there's some people, well, or some people like me, we don't wanna run ahead, and then there's other people, they, they wanna move ahead real fast. But if you got a good cross-section, maybe you can come to a compromise on these things, and it would be nice to get more interest in the town, because there's, there's plenty of intelligent people in this town, you know, but, and there's some that got some time. But they also, and these meetings are not too bad, I'm on the Planning Board also, I'm not a voting member, because I'm a selectman, but they have meetings twice a month. And it's not a, it's not a big deal, you can, and people can, can learn from that, and, you know, it's, it's, it's just like, like we're doing right now, it's just a discussion.
But there's a set of, there's a set of bylaws also.
There's a set of bylaws, and we're writing them up now, the new ones, that's actually, there's gonna be hearings on them, pretty, one pretty soon, next week or so.
Town plan.
And, so, I mean, that stuff is, they are drawing up this, this plan, that's, that's a plan, that's a vision, they tell me, like I said, I'm not a voting member, but, it's a vision, and, which, and I think we oughta have a vision for everybody concerned. Some people, well, you know, they, they kinda like a sleepy town, some people, they want a lot of activity, or whatever, you know, different opinions, but that ain't all bad, that, that's good as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, you should be, you should be aware that a lot of the positions have a yearly fee that we pay, and usually, it's three hundred bucks, or, you know, a few bucks is what they get, but then there's hourly paid positions like the Listers, the auditors are hourly paid, but a lot of the committees that we appoint to, they're, they're not. A, a lot of the positions, like the Health Officers zoning, they're, they're monthly fee that's given to them, and again, it's mainly the cover of gas and other things.
Is that public knowledge, what people, what they're paid?
Uh, should be, yeah.
So then, is there any, is there any reason not to have a, have a page on the website that describes what the jobs are, links to the state, says what it's gonna pay, and then people, as Donna's asking for, can look at our website, get the information they want right there, one shop stopping, and they can push the one link and then get to the-
I, I mean, I've talked to people, at least three or four people in the last week that said, you know, I, I would consider being a Lister, but I don't really know everything that it entails, and people just don't wanna dive into something without making sure they can make that commitment.
Yeah, and we can make it easy, we can make it easy for people to find out about it, since there's this fabulous website now.
Make it easy for them to get some information, and I, and I don't think, I don't know, I'm only speaking for myself, but I don't think we expect somebody to come in here, off the street, and know the whole job in a short amount of time, they're gonna learn as they go. You know, but that's why we're kinda caught right now, because we only got one person, and she just started, I mean, I'm sure she's capable of doing the job, but, and, but if, if somebody was there, you, you know, everybody learns from each other, that's how, how it works on-
But if we have a bit of a job description, then we will attract the people.
Yeah.
Well, the job description is fine, like for the auditors, you gotta know figures, it's better than how to check, check and balance, that's what you gotta know.
The bottom line is, is that, like I said, sec, until we get something put up, the Secretary of State, and if you look for public officials, you'll see the list, and they'll show all of them, including the, the Listers. The Listers are required by law to, to meet certain standards, and that part of what we've done is, and like a lot of other towns, we bought a software package that enables people to make judgment when they go out in the property, and put numbers within that, and then it'll calculate the formula for the, what the price of the house is. But you, as a person, needs to learn how to make the proper judgment, which means a lot of, with Ronnie, a lot of it's hands-on, you gotta get out there in the field, you gotta sort of get the feel of what it is, because you, you can do the book learning and know how to do it, but that doesn't get you where you need to be, you know? You go read a book and learn how to do electrical work, and the first thing you do is put your finger in the socket, that's, that's not the, the thing that we're looking for. We want people that are interested, wants to learn and be able to do it, and that is an hourly paid job, the auditor's an hourly paid job, these aren't jobs that you get rich at, because there's, April first to a set time is when people work hard in the Lister's office, because they have to get the grand list done, and the rest of the year can be very slow, it can be, you know, you get very limited hours per week, that's there.
We definitely need somebody to answer questions all year.
Do we have a, is there any option for things like mentoring from other towns?
Yes.
That sort of thing?
Yeah, well, in the other towns, some of the other towns have hired full-time assessors too, but that costs you money, so that basically, you have an assessor setting with your Listers, the Listers are going out and gathering data, and this guy's certified assessor of property, and he sort of looks and gives judgment calls and, and does things, because what happens is, our grand list basically sets common level appraisal, some other things that help us with our property tax, the higher we can be, this year it was a hundred and seven percent, because houses were selling for lower than what we have assessed at. In the past though, we've been as low as below eighty percent, and we've had to pay to have a reappraisal, and it can cost you a hundred and eighty thousand bucks, so you, so you, and probably more now. So basically, you wanna try and keep that as level as you can, in the playing field of watching market, know what's being sold, where are you in relation to that, on your cards and the rest, there's, there's a huge amount to that job that I think takes years to really learn well, but the basics of knowing how to learn the software, and what to put in it and so forth, that's a year or so, and you're probably pretty, but judgment calls and the rest really takes time, because you need to learn it, because people will grieve their taxes, they will grieve their appraisals, and when they do that, the Board of Civil Authority has to meet, and there's been a few times when people haven't disagreed, had disagreed, and the courts have told us, we're not quite right, so. So, but the more that the Lister knows, the less chance we have of that occurring. And that's where that is, yes, Fred?
A different, a little bit, a different subject came out of that discussion, did I hear correctly that next Wednesday's meeting is gonna involve some discussion of new bylaws?
New town plan.
Okay.
Town plan.
I thought bylaws were mentioned, and it went from there right to-
No, no bylaws, I don't know.
It did sound that way, I mentioned the bylaws, being, talking about Planning Commission, and then when you heard Planning Commission, I think you were talking about-
You, you have-
I caught that.
Let me give you one oh one of what I know of, of planning, you basically have a town plan, which Ronnie says, which is the vision of where the town wants to go, and what it wants to do, sort of a broad brush thing, because it gives you a lot of options, but within certain boundaries and so forth. Then you have the bylaws, which comes with, and they're very restrictive usually, they have control, controls for certain things, that is put in there, that requires conditions on certain things that might come in and so forth, and that's usually where all that is, is in the bylaws. Again, where the town plan might describe that it, it wants to have businesses expand in the home, they want more home businesses, things of that nature, and moving it, they would also like to see manufacturing, but they like to see them meet certain goals, where those goals would normally be set in the bylaws. Because you're gonna say you're allowing the business, but when you look at the bylaws, it's gonna say that business is restricted if it is gonna have nuclear waste.
The bylaws will be created after the plan is actually, actually complete and approved.
Yes, now, some of that stuff-
If the plan is too restrictive, if you feel it's too restrictive, you know what the bylaws are gonna be.
That's right.
To enforce that, that's, that's what you have to think about.
So, the bylaws come from the town plan, right? It's the, it's the execution of the vision, so, we, the vision is very important, it's not just some general, it, it, it's not just some general plan, it drives what those bylaws are, and the bylaws will have the teeth.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so when you review the town plan, which is on our website, the draft, make sure you read through it and, and see where things are, and see if you think it's lingering in the way that you want your town to grow or not grow, or if you want something added, or, or you might make suggestions that you think something's too restrictive, because we as a Select Board need to hear that.
When people read, when people read that proposed plan, they should, they should also look at the section for implementation as well, and that gives us pretty good clues about the bylaws, you know, where they're coming from.
That's right. Yeah, so basically, yes, they wanna look at everything in the plan, if they have comments, though, make sure you let us, the Select Board know, because then at that point, we can make suggestions for change, send it back to the Planning Board, and go from there. We've even in the past had petitions where it ends up that the town, there's a townwide vote on these plans, it's not made up, but they've come and petitioned to actually have a townwide vote, and we've done that in the past, so, so there's lots of options, but first, before you do any of that, make sure you read what's there, understand it, and then come and let's discuss it. Because as Ronnie says, the discussion part is the, is the real thing that we need, and we need it from all sides of town.
And there's a lot of information there too, there's-
That's, but that's one of the reasons why we scheduled our hearings the way we did, we've got a hearing that's coming up next Wednesday, and our next hearing isn't gonna up till-
May two.
Till May, so, so, there's, there's, there's time in between for the Select Board.
Give people time enough to digest what they've read, what they're looking at, you discuss it, like we're discussing here tonight, this is mostly a discussion, you hear somebody's view, well, you get a chance to think about it, you don't have to make a decision on it right then, you, you're gonna have another meeting besides, and you get a chance to, jeez, I didn't read it that way, you know, sometimes, I've had things, people tell me, and I say, look, you must read different than I do, I understand, and they're probably perfectly right, but I mean, then when it sheds the light on it, then you look at it, and you say, yeah, this is, you know, maybe we oughta do this, but all that stuff is, does lead to your bylaws, whatever you decide on your, you know, on your vision, so to speak.
Um, can I chime in with a, just a, a recommendation for anybody who takes an interest in the town plan, is first of all, I would recommend that everyone take an interest in the town plan- Is first of all, I would recommend that everyone take an interest in the town plan. But to Nelson's point where, uh, you know, the town plan is the, uh, is the general guideline, and then the bylaws become the meat. As you look at the town plan, I would start with the vision, because the vision is what drives the content for the rest of the town plan. And then as you go through the content of the town plan, you have some context of where, of where it came from. And you can get some preview of what the bylaws are gonna look like coming out of it. And, and as you said, the bylaws will have the teeth. So, um, I guess the, the bottom line is, I want all panel residents to really take an active interest in this town plan, and make sure that your input is heard.
It should be clear that the town plan will have an impact on everyone in your town. So if you're interested.
Thank you for saying that, people I don't think are awake yet. It is gonna have an impact, one way or the other.
Yeah, it's, it might be something that you're not even thinking of today, but by reading the town plan, it might bring it to, to your mind of what it is, and go from there.
And, and, sorry, final word. My final word, is that it, it is complex, it is complex. I mean, when I first started reading the town plan, I jumped into the sections that interest me, and I skipped the vision. And that was a mistake. So, that's why I wanted to get that out there, this is the, I know I said that the other one was my last word, but this one, this one's my last word. So, I, so.
Yeah, like me, you'll never have my last word.
I wanted to, I wanted to kind of give, give, at least the, the people of panel some, some, uh, some insight as to how I approached it, and what I learned, and how they can be more, more streamlined in how they approach it. Start with the vision, get into the meat of it, and, and as you're getting into the meat of it, the sections that interest you, then you'll have some insight into where the, uh, where the meat came from with the full, and, and get to the, what was that section in the end? You referred to it earlier.
Implementation.
The implementation plan, so the implementation plan is very important, because the bylaws will come right out of that.
Okay. Any more public comments? Okay, moving on. Under, well, I talked about one of them, town plan, was under old business. Then we have animal control and legal. I wanted to, I'm gonna go to new business, because I think those two we might end up in executive session. Letter to, boy, excuse me. Think I'm gonna make it. Letter to the state on Route Seven. Uh, we're working on a letter to send to the state to do with the Route Seven, and possible Route Seven wishes for improvement. If the public has any comments or concerns, if they wish us to address, please let us know. And don't be afraid to write your own letter. If you feel strongly about something to do with improvements on the highway, whether it's signage, or whatever it is, because the Department of Transportation agents, I'm sorry, it's now V-Trans, Vermont Transportation, uh, V-Trans. And they'll take in, I'm sure, look at your letters if you'll send them. Just that, as you know, we have recently lost a couple of people on that highway. But through the years, there's been many accidents and other things that's occurred there, so. Okay, anybody else on any of that?
Bill wants his opinion.
Yeah, Bill?
What I'm gonna say is, first I'd like to thank Craig Odell, who's our emergency coordinator, for basically saying, can we get a traffic study going as the place to start? And then, uh, as I understand it, is that it's likely to happen, and the letters will be helpful in that happening, is that the chair of the Transportation Committee has asked that the Safety Division, you know, undertake it on the basis of those, the two fails there and other accidents. But also, the BCRC is now aware, knows, people have called Senator Sanders' office, and he's gotten interested, and they'll also talk to the Division Garage, so it's going from top down and bottom up. But I think usually, when you're asking for something like a traffic study, is that the weight of the select board itself is, uh, it's, it's quite important. And since that is a state highway, um, what does a traffic study do? As it looks at the data over the years, it will come down, and it'll assess the situation. And I think the point is that I can make recommendations to mitigate what seems to be a real hazard throughout that area.
Do we, uh, just asking, I, I think, I thought that there were some studies that were done, uh, I thought there were some studies that were done previously, at least some, uh, some recommendations, and what were those recommendations, were they implemented?
There was a plan for rebuild all the way from panel center north, and that is a shelf life for a period of time. And I think that shelf life may have worn out. The traffic studies are all sorts of things, is that, for instance, when we lowered the speed limit down by Tornabees, the liquor store, et cetera, is that they, they basically come, and they look it through, and then it goes to the three individuals, Department of Motor Vehicles, Department of Transportation, and Public Safety. And then, if there's a recommendation to make a change, who knows what it'll be? Would it be, uh, traffic calming devices, would it be some shoulders, would it be some moderations along that line? Is that then, the select board requests, it would go to them, and then they would vote to approve or to take an action. Because it's federal highway, and there are all the federal rules, there's books galore, and all, and all sorts of things. And we've been through this a lot, we've been through it on the, at one point, there was a big attempt to get a, um, certain kind of light out here. And we ended up with the blinkers boarding the school, satisfy some, not others, or lowering the speed limit up in, uh, North Panel there in a few places. But I've found that they're very responsive, the select boards write letters, and then people get behind it, and ask them to actually do the work that, do it. And it's more or less getting it on a list.
And the gist of my question was really, was there any low-hanging fruit there? Did we already know something, did we already have recommendations? I'm sorry, what I said was, uh, the gist of my question was whether or not there was any low-hanging fruit there. Did we already have some studies and already have some recommendations? Because it seems to me that the longer it takes, the more people are in danger.
Yeah. They will know, if they can, if there are some plans, they can pull out.
Okay. Have to excuse me.
So, so where, so where do we go, so we are gonna write a letter, or we've decided we are, the select boards have a lot of?
I, I think we should.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion.
I second it.
That we do that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Bow, knees.
And we're talking about from, basically from the school to Bennington Line?
There's a couple of real bad spots, even if they fix them, in between, by Armstrongs, the west corners there.
That's the one.
That should be fixed. I mean, there's some things that, if they could do at least that, would make it a safer highway. I've got a couple of deaths on that highway.
That's where we just lost these young men, right?
And, uh, there's another spot, I just, I don't know, I can't even think of it right now. Maybe it's right up there, up where that other bridge crosses. Where that, uh, Health Food Store, Health Vitamin Store, wherever that is, right in that area. That's all, that's a couple of nasty corners right there, in that small bridge.
You count the number of times the fire department has, or the rescue squad's gotten called out for somewhere around Jackson Cross Road, all the way up to, you know, where you're talking about.
Yeah.
Or so, uh, it's more than anywhere else that I'm aware of in town, by a long shot. And, yeah.
Good.
So it's just a matter of getting attention to it.
Well, I mean, it would be nice if it was renewed from, from the school up, or just past the school up to the line, it would be wonderful. But if, even if them, a couple of real bad spots could get addressed, that would help a lot too.
I'm gonna ask Jason to take over, so I don't keep coughing in your face.
Okay. Um, the next thing we wanna talk about is, um, the open positions. We have, um, we have a list that's out there right now on our website. Again, lister and auditor, both, both part-time positions, so they're open. Um, just some notes for next week. We'd like to talk about, um, appointing a committee for the town administrator, a hiring committee. And something I'd like to talk about for next week is on the list of projects we have going on right now, for our new board members to see. Some issues that we've been, that are on the back burner right now. From there, um, we have legal to talk about, and we have animal control to talk about. Make a motion that both of those items went to executive session.
I move we go into executive session for animal control.
I can talk.
Sorry.
So you just wanted the one, and then?
Yeah, then come back on it.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Okay. I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Yeah, I'd like to get a motion to go into executive session for legal this time?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. I second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I need a motion to.
I make a motion that we contact our town clerk and get some more information. We also get that information sent up to our new lawyer, and get it squared away.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
None heard, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That's all the business before us. Take motion to adjourn.
I'll adjourn. He's smelling.
All those, all those in favor say.
I miss the president.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And we're outta here. Thank you, guys.